Chair, apologies again for the delay. We're just about live on YouTube and then we can start. All right, one second. All right, Mr. Chair, thank you. Yes. Is your microphone on, Mr. Chair? Can you start again, please?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Did you want me to start all over again?
Please, if you would.
Let me hear the rap. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, February 21st, Lakewood Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Deverall, will you please take role?
Philip Combs.
Present.
Lynn Larson. Mark Herr.
Present.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Ellen Talbo.
Present.
Sharon Wallace.
Present.
Robert Estrada.
Present.
You have full court.
Thank you. Approval of our minutes from February the 7th, 2024. Everybody had a chance to look at them online. Does anyone have any questions or corrections?
No.
I'll accept the motion, please. Been moved by Mr. Larson. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Herr. All those in favor, I.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Updates this evening?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We will, it's now time for our public comment portion of the meeting. No one has signed up, and is there anyone online?
No, there is not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, open and close on the public comment. We now open our public hearing. Before we do that, first we would like to hear from, I believe, Ms. Newton. Is that correct, Ms. Spear? Yes, come on down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. This evening, we are back discussing the multifamily tax exemption program. On February 7th, there was a presentation and overview of the MFTE program. And the purpose of the review is to ultimately work providing before you the expansion of the Central Business District Residential Target Area for your consideration. Included in your packet are a general overview of comments that I've recorded from the meeting that we had on February 7th. And additionally, a recommended motion if you choose to move forward this evening or have further discussion going forward, that is your choice. And just, I won't go through the multifamily tax exemption again tonight, but just a quick overview, it is a significant incentive, primarily for economic development, but also for affordable housing that incentivize multifamily development within the residential target areas of the Central Business District, Springbrook and the Lakewood Station District. Per Commissioner Talbo's suggestion, we included some photos in tonight's packet of the four projects that are currently under the property tax exemption. And those include the Springbrook Apartments, now called Wellstone, as well as the Rayner Terrace on 108th and Townview Apartments, which is located within the Central Business District, and the 112th Street Apartments. Also included is are the residential target areas as they currently exist, as well as some information on why we're moving forward with the recommendation for the Central Business District expansion and a map that details that expansion of the Central Business District. And with that, that will conclude my comments unless you'd like me to elaborate. And back to you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone have any additional questions for Ms. Newton? Mrs. Wallace?
When would it, when is the proposal to take effect? The expansion?
So as soon as you you approve it, then if, we would then take it to City Council. It's scheduled to be reviewed in April, in late April. If it's adopted, then it would take effect in May.
Yeah, it's 30 days after action by City Council.
Thank you. So closer to the end of May.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
I wonder whether the the, not homeless, but the low-income housing exemption can have a limit in terms of a ratio of those units to all the units in the city or something like that. And isolate it as a factor rather than have zoning created around it.
That's certainly something that we could consider going forward. Tonight's recommendation is solely to look at the expansion of the Central Business District area. However, that's something you can discuss further as well.
Any other questions? Sir, Mr. Combs?
I would, I would second that, just to look at locations that strategically make sense to expand the program further. If we already have zoning allowed for multifamily, it seems like low-hanging fruit for trying to solve all the different challenges that we have, creating more housing, meeting the diverse needs of the incomes of the people here and so on. I think for right now, I support this program. But as you heard last time, I'm supportive of it growing even more to the extent that we actually start seeing development happen. We could always revisit it if we have too much, but I think that would be a very good problem to have. And I don't know any cities that are suffering so much from that that they are actually pulling back.
Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, at this time then, Ms. Newton, thank you, and we will open, excuse me, one more time. Mr. Combs?
What was the conclusion of that singular property that was of concern, the library parcel? What was that, what were the findings on that particular parcel? Is that something that we're being proposed to include in this? Or is that something that was being proposed to be excluded?
Ms. Spear?
Okay.
Yeah.
So currently, the proposal is to include it under this current recommendation. However, it's up to discussion, of course, by the Commissioners if you'd like to make any changes or suggest any changes.
If I recall, Mr. Combs, you did indicate that you would recommend going forward, even if it meant eliminating that parcel. Mr. Larson?
Are we then to schedule or design a different place for the replacement library?
It's really up to the Pierce County Library System Board of Trustees to determine where they would like to build their long-term permanent library facility.
Isn't it a matter of land use?
Well, it's wherever it's allowed within the, I mean, ideally, they've talked about keeping it in the Central Business District. And the latest conversation with the Board of Trustees is that their preference has been to keep it on the existing property. However, that could change over time.
It's just been such a wonderful place for a library for so many years. I'd like, I'd hate to see it just dismissed out of hand because, in order to include it in a zone.
But you're right, Mr. Larson, that library site would be included in the proposed expansion, which means that it's possible that someone could decide to build on it instead of putting a library there. Another possibility, if we, if that is included.
That would be dependent on the other support of other members of the council. I don't want to uniformly say that I think that's what it ought to be, if others don't agree necessarily.
Okay, any other comments? No other comment? Thank you, Ms. Newton.
You're welcome.
And I think at this time, we will now open a public hearing regarding the proposed change to the Central Business Residential Target Area boundary. We open, do we have anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Has anyone signed up?
No, Mr. Chair.
Then seeing none, hearing none, then closed.
If I could, I'm sorry, I should have said this first. Because of the technical issues at the start of this meeting, perhaps you'd be willing to hold it open until the next here, the next meeting in two weeks, just in case there was somebody that tried to get on while I was still setting us up.
You mean the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry, the testimony, if you would mind.
Oh, the testimony.
Just in case there was somebody online who was unable to get on while I was trying to get us set up this evening. If you're willing.
Agreeable to that? To holding, then we're moving this to another, to the next meeting?
Just to be belts and suspenders and allow for public comment.
Which would mean no vote at this time and until we get comments, possible comments?
Mr. Chair, just one question. Can we, is it within our purview to recommend this expansion less that site? Or do we have to recommend as it's proposed only?
The Planning Commission, you have full discretion to edit and make motions and recommendations up to the City Council. So what's been brought before you is the staff recommendation. And this was what was originally proposed last fall to the council. The council wasn't ready to take action at the time and sent it back to the commission for further discussion, which is what you're doing now. So you could, a couple of different options, actually. You could take no action at all, you could pass it as is, or you could make amendments.
Thank you.
Then if we were to make amendments, then that would be something that we would for sure need to propose either today or at the next meeting. Mr. Lindholm?
Yeah, this is regarding the library side as well. Do we have clarity on, is there a preference to stay on that site? Or are they considering that site amongst many sites?
Ms. Newton, I know, has been working with the Library Foundation to some extent, so she might have some information.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this point, they haven't made a decision. However, the conversations that I've heard, because I do listen to the Board of Trustees when they meet, and so far, their preference is to stay on the current property. But there has been some discussion about, you know, there was an advisory committee that was formed that made that recommendation. However, if the Board of Trustees found that there was another site more suitable, maybe they made, needed a larger library or what have you. It's really up to them. I do know that they, their preference at this point is to stay on the current property and the very least, stay within the Central Business District.
My personal preference is certainly to give them that option if it's a strong option they're considering. I think it's a beautiful intersection between that downtown business district and the residential neighborhood nearby. You see families walking with their children, and that's what we want to plan for. Yeah.
And as you probably know, the Pierce County Library System Board of Trustees meetings do allow for public comment. So if any of you wish to make comment to them, you can do that as well.
Yes.
As an individual.
Yes.
They meet on the second, they meet on the second Wednesday of the month, both online or Zoom and in person. Ms. Larson, excuse me?
Is there a way to have our sentiments forwarded to the Library Board so that they understand it comes from the Planning Commission and not just an individual on the Planning Commission?
If what you're asking, Mr. Larson, is whether the Planning Commission can communicate to the Library Foundation its thoughts or hopes as to what they do and decide? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay, I would have to actually check with the City Council to see if that's something that they would. I don't see a problem necessarily, but I just want to.
Check with the City Council to see if we should be able to talk and share information with the Library Board?
As a planning commission, you are an advisory board to the City Council.
Okay, I get it.
So you're.
Apologies for my amazement.
You're absolutely welcome to go and testify as an individual. But whether it's an official communication from Planning Commission is a separate question.
Got it.
Go ahead, Mr. Combs.
I was just gonna say that this overlay, and I'm not, I think I did mention, I'm not opposed to excluding this. I am also not opposed to keeping it because the zoning already allows for all this. We're talking about just the overlay of, do you get the exemption opportunity? And in the back of my head is, if someone were to build a library and want to do a joint venture project and have housing over a library, they would be disincentivized if we excluded it. And so in the back of my head, the reason we have this is to incentivize more housing. So I wouldn't be opposed actually to keeping it. I guess I just, I just wasn't sure who owned it, what the status was and so on. And now that it sounds like it's still in their possession, they still have intent to look at it, I wouldn't be opposed to keeping it that way, you know, keeping it in the plan. Obviously, we're not making a vote tonight, but I just, my observation is, we're just talking about the overlay. We're not doing any zoning talks or anything like that tonight.
Correct. The land use will not change. It's just whether they have this incentive.
Yeah.
Interesting.
My position and agree.
And I'll just, I feel I'm compelled now to comment because I, because I was the one who raised the issue. For me personally, it was, it was, it was, it was more of an issue at the prior meeting that we had. The issue for me was more around, I guess, how I interpret it as a developer asking for special consideration. But in the grand scheme of things, I do agree that, and I do think that it is purposeful and useful to, you know, I am in support of keeping the boundaries consistent. And upon going further back, I see now, I think also, what was confusing for me was the maps in the prior item. And so I see now that the pink is aligned with the CBD in general, too. So I support the consistency of those boundaries. So I just want to clarify that.
So would, if I heard correctly, what we're saying here that there's a possibility that we may want to exclude the area that the library is on that was from being part of this proposed change? Is that what I heard? Mr. Larson?
I withdraw my perspective about withdrawing the, excluding the area from the zoning overlay. I think it's, it would be a non-functional act.
Okay. Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair, as I think about this more, I just want to be careful. I certainly think that if they were to have a model like they have in University Place where you have housing above the library and all that they've built, that's a beautiful model. That's a community-centric model. Again, the types of things we want to be planning for. I also want to be careful that we don't incentivize a multifamily builder to come in and build in a way that the library can't compete with or it doesn't make sense for them to try to compete with. And not knowing the type of library model they're looking at building, it's hard to gauge, right, whether we want to exclude that? Or are we putting them in the ring with a builder they can't, or a developer that they can't compete with? And I certainly believe in free market and the importance of that. I just don't want to set our libraries up for failure.
Good point. Mr. Combs?
I would just, and I know what you're saying, and I think that we're all on the same page with that. But we don't have any, this is not affecting the zoning that's there right now. So someone can come in and do that immediately. And we, I don't think we're, I don't think we're incentivizing anyone to tear it down because it's gone or do anything different. I mean, it's, this is just how the overlays and zoning works, you know? It's, you have to kind of look at the whole thing. And if we cherry pick, we're not going to do it for this guy. And that, you know, it could definitely can look like preferential treatment, which I am trying to keep a different, you know, distance from. I think that the consistency is really good. You know, if you try and say, okay, this is our area, this is our targeted growth area, it makes sense. It doesn't mean anyone will do it, doesn't mean they'll build. But I would hate to tie the hands of the current owner just because we don't want, we don't want them to do something with their property. I think that would be, I mean, if it was your property, how would you feel if you're excluded? Because someone wanted you to do something with it. And that would be my concern. And maybe staff can speak to if we have any issues with that. But I don't, I don't necessarily care one way or the other. If the library doesn't go there, they'd find a better, more effective, cost-effective place to go. I love that it was there. Our library where I'm at is in terrible condition, and I would rather them tear it down and do this project that I, you know, some mixed-use development would be way better than libraries we got now. But that's private property owners to decide. So that's, that's just my two cents. And so I'm not, I'm not advocating for or against. It's more of a, I'd rather broad stroke and have it be consistent with the zoning and the Central Business District and look for ways to expand it and not be specific on properties unless there's, unless we had some, something about that that made it very unique or specific. And last time, my reason for saying carve it out is just to acquiesce to make sure we got it done. I would rather have a better thing done than nothing at all, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so the recommendation from Ms. Spear was that we continue the public hearing to next week because of the technical difficulties we had. And there was possibility that some who wanted to speak just dropped off because they weren't able to get on.
So that would actually be to March 2nd, I believe, is the date of your next meeting.
March 2nd?
Yeah.
Okay, and we all concurrence with that?
I could be wrong, March 6th, sorry, March 6th, my apologies.
March 6th?
Yes.
Okay. So. Okay, next on the agenda, we're talking about unfinished business. We don't have any new business, the draft biennial review.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, apologies for the late start in the, we're going to be using the materials straight out of the packet this evening. So what you have in front of you on the screen will be what was provided to you before the meeting. But essentially, this is a memo that is summarizing for you the status right now of the biennial review process for the downtown and also the station district subarea, and then also the status of what's going on with the significant update to what in 2011 was a subarea adopted for just Tillicum and is being expanded in 2024 to incorporate Woodbrook as well. So I will work my way through the PDF. And please, if there's, if I'm making anyone dizzier, you need me to slow down, let me know. This map here is showing you the actual boundaries for each of the three subareas that have been adopted to date. The gold is where we are and what we were just talking about in the downtown or the Central Business District Zone. The red off to the right-hand side or the east side of the city is the Station District Subarea Plan. And then down in the southwest would be the, or pink is the Tillicum Subarea Plan. And what we are suggesting again with the expansion in 2024 is to also have Woodbrook be considered part of that same subarea. This is not new information for you, but it always is beneficial sometimes to repeat things. Again, what, part of what we're doing in the 2024 comprehensive plan process is now recognizing that not only do we have to meet this full number of 9,378 new housing units in the next 20 years, but we also now, as a city, need to say we will have so many units for each type of permanent supportive or non-permanent supportive housing at the 0% to 30% area median income. And then also unit numbers at the 30% to 50%, 50% to 80%, 80% to 100%, et cetera, area median income. And then on the far right, you'll see that in addition to all those regular housing units subsidized or not, there also needs to be about 575 emergency units added to the city's housing stock. In addition to the housing, which we've talked quite a bit about already this year, there is also an employment or job growth target, which is at 9,863. So that is a net increase between now and 2044. This next table just clarifies that a little bit further to show you that when the downtown and the subarea, excuse me, station district subareas were adopted, there were numbers of jobs and housing units identified within each one. But that process did not anticipate the AMI stuff. So there's a total number for each one of those, but it doesn't say. And so many of them will be, for instance, 80% AMI or below. So as we're going through this year, where we've got so much kind of coming together, dovetailing together between the biennial reviews of the subareas as well as our 10-year review of the full comp plan, these numbers that you see right in front of you here for the two subareas might change depending on the calculations that we're undergoing right now to develop the comprehensive plan changes. Meaning, you may see in downtown, the total is going to be 2257 still, for instance, but 50 of those are going to be 80% AMI, or 65 are going to be 30% or below. We're just not sure yet if we're going to need to break it down to that detail. But what you also see in this table is that downtown was identified for about a quarter of the citywide's housing target. The station district was at about 20%. And then the remaining of the housing is intended to be outside of the subarea boundaries, excuse me. And when I say outside, I mean outside of the two, so they could incorporate into Tillicum. For jobs, it's quite aggressive in terms of new jobs happening in the downtown subarea. It's almost 75% of the jobs targeted in the city for the next 20 years. About 13% of that for the station district area and the same for the rest of the city. This is another number that might change. Part of the reason it was set as high as it was in 2018 was because there is a complicating layer of planning that has to happen with our regional body, the Puget Sound Regional Council. And in order to be considered a regional growth center, which our downtown is, you have to have a certain number of people and jobs per acre. And so this was a way of saying, we're going to hit that mark. And fast forward six years, seven years, we're reexamining that to see if we still need to use that 75%. Or if we could actually say some of those jobs may actually be placed elsewhere in the city without any issues in terms of PSRC. The downtown code and plan and planned action was adopted for the downtown in 2018. And just quickly, I think you already understand what the plan and the code is, but the planned action ordinance, for those who may not know what that is, under the State's Environmental Policy Act, there is a way to say, we're going to assume so many people, so many jobs, so many transportation trips, so many different kinds of building, excuse me, construction in this area over the next X horizon. And by doing that, we're going to assume the impacts that that development will have on the environment. Environment means more than just nature. It is buildings, traffic, health, number of other things. And so a planned action is where the assumptions are made and it allows individual developments, when they come forward for application, to skip the process of having to do that analysis. If they say, we are within this area where you already assumed and planned for so many cars, so many people, so much greenhouse gas emissions, whatever it is, if they still fall within that pre-planning document, they can skip ahead to the next step in the permit review. So that's what the planned action was adopted in downtown. Just really quickly, the central idea behind this subarea was to say, there's no there there in Lakewood. We obviously incorporated long after there was development here. And so the idea is to create a true downtown where people feel like this is where they go for the central community, certainly with the city hall that has contributed with the library. We were just talking about that contributes. But knowing that we now truly do have a downtown where people can live and work and play. This here is the map for what was adopted in 2018 as the subarea plan, all of these areas. The East Commercial, Town Center, and Colonial Districts within the subarea, which totals about 330 acres, each have slightly different. each have slightly different development standards. And so, for instance, the Colonial District, which is up north of where we are sitting now and incorporates uh the the mall that has colonial uh style construction, which is why this is even considered, it was an inspiration for that. They do have slightly different design standards for the buildings than, for instance, in the Town Center District. So there's, there's specific things in each part of these uh subarea of the subareas. And the other thing to uh keep in mind is, as we talked about last time, I think it was a question from Mr. Herr, if I'm saying that right, sorry. The bright orange is actually another district, and that is kind of that edge that we talked about where it's a stepping down of height and density and intensity of development. So the the idea is within these areas, this is our downtown, meaning it's tall, meaning it's dense, meaning it's busy. You have this outer edge of um stepping it down and shifting into being more consistent to the residential areas or the other existing areas around this uh subarea, uh more, more consistently, less, less jarringly, I'll put it that way. The last thing that you see here is this red circle. This is the uh transportation transit analysis that was done, just in case you're wonky enough to want to know about that. That was the radius for the transportation analysis that was conducted. So what was asked for by our city council and why we're here tonight to talk about a biennial review is that the council wanted to verify, initially, it was every two years, hence biennial review. But this has now changed into a five year process after the one we're in right now. To make sure that the plan and the regulations are working as intended and the development is coming into this area um at the pace and in the types that the city council had envisioned. The other thing that is part of the subarea biennial review is to go back and look at the planned action and verify that the assumptions about, again, the number of people, jobs, impacts on existing uh development and businesses, et cetera, are also correct still. And if not, maybe update that planned action and its assumptions. And then uh the third is to take a look at the transportation costs and how the transportation mitigation fees that are currently collected in this part of the city. Whether those fees are hindering, hampering, whether they are correct and are being realized at the, at the pace needed to help build the transportation projects that were identified for the subarea. The other thing about our downtown, and I think I just mentioned this to you, is you see these two maps, they're actually from two different organizations. Our downtown subarea map is here on the right. The one on the left is the Puget Sound Regional Council's i- identity of the regional growth center for Lakewood, and yes, the boundaries are the same. But what that means is we have the local review and adoption of the subarea plan code and planned action. And at the same time, the PSRC uh is tracking and watching that this subarea is growing again, consistent with the multi-county planning policies that we've talked about before. And what's the hammer there? What, what teeth does uh PSRC have? If they were to ever find that this center was not growing at pace or consistent with those regional or statewide policies and rules, they would have uh the ability to cut off federal transportation dollars to the city that flow through PSRC. So that, that is their hammer. I mentioned activity units a little bit ago. Uh, that is the technical term for the combination of people and jobs within this area. So if you look right here, um, right now, the city downtown is at about eighteen activity units, which is the minimum that uh PSRC will say qualifies a center. However, if everything goes uh as planned and the downtown grows uh at the pace and intensity that was intended with this subarea planning process, it's going to get up to um forty, I'm sorry, it's going to get up to fifty eight to sixty nine, which is well above even what the new requirements, if a new uh center was proposed by PSRC member, that would be forty five is the new minimum. If our downtown develops as planned, fifty eight to sixty nine is where it would end up. So I know that was a lot. Any questions? If not, I'll keep going.
No questions.
Okay. So in 2025, we're going to get through this process this year at the local level to do the 2024 big comp plan update, but also these reviews of our subareas. And then next year, PSRC will be looking at the center to verify that it is still consistent with the PSRC's criteria. And so we are double dipping or doubling up on our analysis to make sure that as we do what we're doing this year, we're also ready for next year's process. Once again, this is uh the discussion we talked about a little while ago. The city is planning at this point for about a quarter of its new housing units and about three quarters of its jobs to come into the downtown area. There were two previous uh cycles of a review process. However, there have been no changes made to date. Uh, at first, it was because the first review only happened eighteen months after adoption and the consensus was that that wasn't enough time to really let it gel and start to come up out of the ground, if you will. And then in 2022, the decision was, we're not going to take action here because of COVID and how that has dampened economic activity. But come 2024, uh, this is going to be a more robust uh analysis. And you had in your packet tonight, an initial, and I emphasize initial draft, of the review. It is subject to change, and I'll tell you right now, what you got in your packet is not what it will finally read like. There will be changes. However, to summarize what's in it, there have been a number of tenant improvements to existing spaces in downtown, but there's been limited new construction. And this is going basically through the end of 2023. So for instance, right now, this isn't taking into account the fact that we have a temporary library coming in. Again, impacts by COVID have have slowed things other, that might otherwise have happened by now. We are, as a city, looking to partner with public as well as private organizations for additional investment and also for funding. So if you recall last summer, uh, the city applied for what was called a RACE grant. It's a federal grant that would uh help build the Green Street Loop identified in the downtown. So that idea of enhanced section pretty much right here for people to walk, bike, do something outside of a car while they are either near where they live or near where they work. Uh, and so that is a focus. Uh, second time around this year, we're going to apply again for that RACE grant. Hopefully that will uh come through. And if that's the case, we'll be able to move forward with that. The other thing that I believe the city council is talking about is uh a couple of different options for potential downtown park. And so that may be coming to you just as an update here within the next, I don't know, six to twelve months. There is now, um, as I think you also know, a new town center mall owner since this subarea plan was adopted. And Kite Realty is its name, and there have been a number of meetings between city representatives and them. And they are open to, again, maybe shifting things around and having a park in areas of property that they now own. Still, no decision has been made, but they've expressed willingness to do that. And they obviously have uh assisted with bringing in this pending housing development that will be happening in that area behind the Barnes and Noble. So multiple hundreds of housing units coming in. This is a summary of to date, the housing permits um and dwelling units that have come in since 2018. Obviously, we are not on target if we've only done point three percent of what the target is in a twenty year period and six years have gone by. There is a question, and here's a great example of, um, you'll see some changes probably by you get, time you get the final version. Per PSRC calculation, we're at three point two percent of our goal, but the city itself was significantly less. We're not sure why. So we're going to figure out the numbers before you get a final version. And then in terms of um employment space and jobs, in the plan, it said so many millions of additional commercial space feet, square feet, and then also uh additional jobs. And here we're doing a little bit better uh in terms of jobs. But again, there's a discrepancy between um what we're seeing from PSRC's calculation versus ours, so we're needing to clarify that. The other item that will probably take a lot of time at your level, as well as the city council, is that traffic mitigation fee. You may be aware that the city does not otherwise collect what are called impact fees. So schools, parks, roads are the most common. It can also be fire districts. But the city does not do that. They move through the process of SEPA when a project comes in to the, to determine impacts that they would have to pay for. However, this is an exception in downtown, again, because of the identified improvements to make it a downtown destination space. A mitigation fee was adopted by council. Looking at the history of whether it's been and how much has been collected by every developer that's come in, it is not keeping pace with what is needed in order to construct all of the identified projects uh in the subarea plan. And so the council has expressed interest in reexamining whether this mitigation fee is the right way to go, whether it needs to change, or some other policy decision needs to be made about the transportation improvements for downtown, how they will be funded over time. So that will be in front of you as well.
Miss Spear?
Yes.
Just, just for clarification, uh, the mitigation fee, uh, how does it work?
Uh, it, what you're doing in the downtown, and I should have spent maybe a little bit of time on this as well. This is what is called a form-based code for the downtown. You may be used to looking at what was called the Euclidian zoning system, sorry to get wonky on you, but this is the residential area, and this is where houses go, and this is a building that can only be a house. Here's a commercial area. This is where businesses go, and these are the only kind of businesses that can go into this structure. A form-based code is very different from that in that it says, and in, and this is the case what we did with downtown. Here's a road, let's call it an arterial. This arterial is going to have um certain frontage, street improvements that are going to be required because of the type of street it is. The building has to have this kind of a height, this kind of a porch entryway, um, a certain number of windows or glazing percentage on the building, right? But in, other than that, it's much freer in terms of what can go inside of that building on that street. And so if you were to go into the code for the downtown, rather than saying single family home, that's the only thing that can go in this building, it would say, this is what the outside needs to be roughly shaped and sized like. Inside, these are, any of these you will, you can do, and then there's a few that are prohibited. So rather than being very specific on what you can do, it really is just laying out those specifics that you cannot. And the idea there is to be flexible over time, as well as just recognize what we're trying to do here is actually combine mixed uses, combining retail and residential in order to allow people to live and work nearby every other activity they may want to do. Hopefully that made sense. So a little bit more on the fee, just to give you a sense of where we're coming from. What has been calculated to date as what would have been paid by private developers so far with the projects is about a million and sixty thousand dollars. What has actually been collected under the administrative policy is only a hundred and forty three thousand. And the reason is, uh, in part, once uh the plan and the code went into place, there was a recognition that for projects was have large numbers of trips. So say a drive-through. Charging them by trip, which is what this is, a transportation mitigation fee is set up to do, you would have maybe a small footprint, a small uh business coming in, oh, let's say Dutch Bros. And all of the traffic that it gets every day would have a very large um traffic mitigation fee, whereas a different type of use that has fewer people or fewer cars going back and forth and pays significantly less. And there's been concern, not only by the developers for those various uses, but also the city council has expressed that over time. And so uh what ended up under the administrative policy happening is the decision was, we're not going to say as of the effective date of this plan, we're going to say, this is the use, this is how many cars are coming to and from your business uh per day or from the house, whatever it is. This is your fee. It was, okay, are you coming into an existing space or are you building a new building or adding on to a building? If it was an existing space, there was a net calculation made, so uh, let's, let's look at the Barnes and Noble. If something were to move in there, uh, sorry, the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, that's empty right now. If a new business were to move into that, rather than saying, how many trips do you think you're going to get, and that's what we're going to charge you on, it is how many trips compared to what Bed Bath &amp; Beyond used to get? And if it's more, you pay just the difference. If this, if your trips are going to be less, you would not be paying the mitigation fee. And so as a result of that, because of all the TIs, rather than the new construction that has happened, this is the, the amount of money that's actually in the bank. So again, it's a policy question ultimately, but you'll be, you'll be um addressing this in part as well as the council. Whether this current system for transportation improvements and the non-motorized as well, not just cars, but people, bikes, uh electric bikes, et cetera, if this is the way to continue to try to set up funding for transportation improvements.
May I ask a
Please.
just a clarifying question or um about that too. Is, is the, does the way that the city treat the the um TIF fees that are collected, is it such that, that that there's flex, there's, there's ultimate flexibility and using the TIF fees kind of kind of however is best um seen, or is it, are the TIF fees limited to particular locations that are identified in a TIA that say an L, you know, the LOS is impacted here, and therefore you have to use the TIF fees to fix this, this improvement?
I'm going to try to answer you technically, madam, technical. Um, this is not a TIF fee. This is a mitigation fee under SEPA. This is not eighty two oh two impact fee. And there's no six-year return. There is no uh transportation service area or TSA like the county has. What we're talking about here is a mitigation fee that is kind of a SEPA calculation. But at the same time, it is based on what is the, the affected transportation project is going to cost and how much is needed to go toward that. So again, let's go back to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. There is an idea to perhaps add a roundabout between this building and that building, another one. And so that would be where the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond money would be used, not over where the new interim library is going in and whatever improvement needs to go there. Does that make sense?
I think so, yeah. So it, because ultimately, it's, it's nicer to have, to be able to have flexibility to kind of you know, decide how to spend that, those funds as opposed to being locked into a spot improvement.
Yeah, and that's one of the things actually that's been brought up um by staff, by council, and and now by yourself this evening, is that does the mitigation fee really make sense? Because what we've done, whether it was intended or not, is because the city doesn't charge impact fees across the city, and this is the only place where it's assessed, people see it as a disincentive rather than an incentive. And apparently, the draw that because you were in the planned action and you can skip ahead with your, your environmental review and the fact that you'll pay this amount as opposed to some other general fee, has not been enough to really draw a lot of interest yet. And so the question is, do we want to keep doing this?
Good point. Mr. Combs?
Especially with such a low collection ratio, it's almost like, why have the disincentive there for not even getting to get anything from it, right? That there's no and I will say, I've seen this in other areas and that impact fee. It's, it's a revenue source, so as cities are trying to figure out how do we balance budgets, this is one of the means of trying to you know, skin the cat. So that's not right terminology, but trying to solve that issue. And when you take a do, do we reset down to zero when they've sat vacant for
No.
three years?
No.
So that's a good thing. I've seen that in some areas where they do that. And that's like a double disincentive. Not only did the landlord lose a tenant, but now it resets and they, the landlord and the tenant have to pay another larger fee, something they've already paid. And so um I, I do see it as a disincentive, and I'm very big into trying to figure out how do we get more businesses here? Because that's how we build up our base to help pay for stuff. Trying to, you know, fee them to, trying to low, you know, put on a bunch of fees, I think. I mean, we're chasing chasing nickels but scaring away dollars, basically. And so I, I kind of am for you know, not doing this unless there's a a way that we can show that it's really going to get us the results. So we're looking for, without scaring away the people we're trying to get in, employers and and potential builders or or even tenants to take that space, you know, if you're a tenant, you don't want to yeah, it, it could be a scary task if you're going to come in and have to pay a fee on top of this just to come in and do business here.
And you're not the only one to express that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I will do it very gently too.
Mr. Larson?
I'm wondering whether we could have a, a offset with jobs created per the trips created, so that there was some incentive to create jobs that goes along with uh the the, the fee, so it works better.
Mr. Combs again?
I, I would, I haven't heard that idea. And I, I think it's great. I, if we've got some real high priority goals, and I saw on here, the two big ones were jobs and housing, if someone solves those, what is the offset? Now, again, it comes what is the offset? Now again, it comes back to how much work you do to try and collect a little bit for this whole thing. I think I would, my recommendation would be to maybe do a little more homework and let us know what you guys, what you guys think on that and why. But I, I like that. If you're able to solve some of the goals that the city has, they're trying to create it.
I love that idea too. I mean, I think that the idea of having an incentive, that the more jobs you create, the less the mitigation fee. Great.
Yeah. It's a win-win. We're, we're getting something out of it. They're not having to pay extra.
And for the record, that was Ms. Wallace.
I'm sorry. And the other thing that's complicating this whole issue that I haven't touched on yet is when this was adopted, the idea was that the city, uh, out of public funds, meaning not from the developer or builder, was going to be covering fifty percent of the cost of the transportation. And so this, the calculated TMF that you see here of a thou, uh, or a million sixty-two thousand, that's would be fifty percent. And the idea is that a matching amount would be coming from the, from the public coffers. Unfortunately, there has been no set aside to date for that public's, um, input. So even if you had collected a hundred percent of your mitigation fees from the private side, the public side is not there to match that. So hence, again, the council is very aware of all of this and wants to make sure as this biennial review happens, this is something they really dive into. And I know they're going to want your feedback and, and suggestions as to whether this is the right model to keep, or if there's something else that would work better.
Anxiously awaiting. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Ms. Spear, please.
Thank you. So the other biennial review we're doing is for the station district, the other subarea that's been around now. Um, this one since twenty twenty-one. Uh, this is, as the name indicates, uh, surrounding the Sounder Station, which is along Pacific Highway here. The shape, I've always kind of thought of it as kind of a, a pan or a frying pan or something sideways. But anyway, uh, the handle goes up to five twelve and that interchange. You've got this, um, southern boundary of I-5, and then you have almost up to where the downtown sta, uh, downtown subarea ends is where we have the, uh, station district subarea.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Has, uh, the DOT property, uh, negotiation been completed?
If, are you referring to the Lakewood Landing project?
Uh, the, uh, DOT prod, the DOT, uh, parcel on the, uh, Lakewood Land, yes.
Yeah.
That's right.
If you'll bear with me, I'll, I'll get there. If you give me, give me just a few minutes, if you would indulge me. Uh, so the vision again is to be, um, celebrating the fact that there's that Sounder Station there, as well as other transit options within this area. Uh, but also looking at, um, high-quality pedestrian-oriented environment, dense mix of commercial and medical, uh, high-density resol, residential uses, excuse me, offering ownership and rental housing opportunities with that direct transportation access. The other thing that was identified and, uh, included in the subarea for station district was concerns about displacement of current residents that are in, um, lower-priced, more affordable housing that's pre-existing, all of this stuff we're having to deal with now. And how do you keep those people stably housed, hopefully in the house that they may have owned for quite a while now, but at the same time, answer the state requirements to, um, increase density here, uh, not only jobs, but, but housing as well. Really quickly, we already talked about this, but again, in this area, it's about twenty percent of the housing units that are assigned to the whole city and about thirteen percent of the jobs. And here we go, Mr. Estrada, Mr. Chair. Um, when this was adopted, there was a project titled, uh, Lakewood Landing. And the idea, I'll go back up to the map, uh, was that along this area, and if you can see pretty dimly, there's kind of this triangle or parallelogram, whatever that would be. Uh, it's about thirty acres total that was anticipated at the time, that would be redeveloped as a, um, mixed-use project with significant number of housing units as well as commercial and retail. And the idea is, the reason for Lakewood Landing's name is it would have a lot of recognition of the ties between Lakewood and Joint Base Lewis McCord. Uh, it would potentially have been something that, uh, would be open for active duty as well as veterans to have affordable housing. Um, there was a lot of, uh, excitement about this at the time the plan was adopted. However, what has happened since is right in the middle of this thirty-acre parcel, or, or area, I should say, because it's multiple parcels. Uh, that middle piece has been purchased and is now being created, uh, not as Lakewood Landing, but as a micro fulfillment center in that old Costco building. And so Lakewood Landing in an, as envisioned in the subarea plan a few years ago is not going to occur. The Wash Dot property, as far as I know, Mr. Chair, has not sold yet. They did, uh, it in twenty twenty-one, Wash Dot did sign an agreement with the city of Lakewood to kind of co-advertise it, sell it if, if there was a, a buyer willing to not only purchase it, but relocate their maintenance facility. And that's been kind of the hang-up. So as of now, they still own the property that they have. A private developer purchased the middle of what would have been Lakewood Landing, and it's not going to do it anymore. And then there's the, the property to the north. Having said all of that, this was actually, I think, raised right before the meeting, right up here, north of the Pacific Highway area, and my arrow hopefully is visible to you. There is now going to be a large affordable housing, uh, project going and actually probably break ground here in the next year or so, uh, to the tune of hundreds of units. And so that will probably, if not exceed, at least match what we thought was going to happen with Lakewood Landing for housing units. However, it is displacing people, uh, so we're going to need to be tracking that. And it won't have the commercial component that Lakewood Landing would have had. So yes, there's been development here and there continues to be. There's actually a faster pace of development in the station district right now than in the downtown. Uh, but it's, it's not that major project that was anticipated at the time of adoption. So what was the request by council regarding these biennial reviews? Checking the progress of development again and making sure that all that's assumed in the code, the plan and the planned action are still holding true and accurate. And then again, um, looking to see whether there needs to be changes based on what's happened to date or what has not happened to date.
We have a question from Mr. Combs.
Hey, um, as we're looking at these subarea plans, there's always this developable, uh, component. And so I don't know that I've ever seen one that has all the layers on it, but some of these locations have, uh, I mean, we have roads, railroads, public space, we've got the, and I'm curious if you were to overlay all these things that are really not buildable anymore, hospital, transit center. How much land really is usable or developable there? And then one component that I know is actually pretty prevalent on that strip is, um, environmental issues.
Right.
And, um, doesn't mean that it's not buildable, but I'll tell you, it's highly unlikely anyone's going to make a big investment until, I mean, it's just so expensive to do anymore and it's just getting worse every year. So you know, if it has a little bit of leakage or plume or whatever, the, and wherever it's sourced, it doesn't matter. It's there, it's a problem and we can't really do anything with it. And so I'd be kind of curious to know how that, um, falls in. I don't know that we have much of that in a Lakewood Town Center, that, that area. This one for sure. And maybe is there any impact on Tillicum? As we look at the subarea plan, I just think it's helpful to know how much do we really have there? And, and so we can, because the subarea I think is enormously, uh, helpful and effective in, in moving things along and creating a vision. But if our vision is about, you know, building a dynamic project, but it's over a plume, that would be a, of unfruitful venture.
At least some of that information is incorporated in the planned action, but it, it is now three years going on, four years old. So whether there's new analysis that can be done, for instance, related to the Clover Creek, uh, flooding issues that the city has been tracking and trying to figure out how to deal with, and whether it turns into ultimately building, um, a levy or something else along the way to help avoid not only overtopping I-5 in a worst-case scenario, but flooding a lot of the areas, um, in, on that southeastern side of the city. That may be some of the analysis we can pick up, but we can certainly share more with you.
Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Spear?
So, uh, continuing, uh, as I mentioned, there's actually been more development here than in the downtown, uh, toward the target. We're actually at almost a quarter of the dwelling units, uh, created that are, were planned for. And we're at about thirty-five percent of the jobs created. So this actually is, is performing very well. Uh, when we contacted Burt Consulting, who helped us do this in twenty-one, and they were looking at the numbers, they were really impressed with how quickly things are happening in the station district. And, um, hopefully because of its location, because it's obviously right next to major freight corridors, transit, uh, transportation corridors, if you're going to get in a car. Um, it may well be that that is going to be developing faster than the downtown, which is a little further removed. Um, depending on the type of, uh, interest that we get for housing in the downtown and then the retail that would follow. So any questions, any other questions about the, the station district one? We've got one more to go.
Ms. Larson, Mr. Larson?
I don't know if this is the right place to bring this up within your presentation, but I wanted to talk about adding more land to the station district. Is that something to talk about?
Please, yes, go ahead.
I propose that, uh, the lands that are across the freeway, the whole area called, uh, Springbrook, uh, belongs in the, in the station, uh, subarea plan. Uh, there are so many similarities and, uh, just because the freeway is there, it doesn't mean those folks can't get to the transit station. Uh, as well, it's almost big enough to do a shuttle or two, uh, morning and evening, uh, just around the neighborhood there. If it were redeveloped into, uh, a, a vibrant, multi-family-based neighborhood and, and already indicated by a major project underway, uh, in Springbrook that echoes the three hundred and ninety, uh, uh, unit, uh, proposal that is behind Lakewood Station. And it would just, to me, be a, a very logical inclusion. Uh, it also has a wonderful, uh, uh, natural geographic feature in, uh, in Clover Creek that goes through it that could be enhanced and used on both sides of it, uh, if, uh, there weren't a barrier there. So, uh, uh, it seems to me like a, a real big fit and, and, uh, take more advantage out of the, uh, uh, more advantage of the, the transportation facilities that are provided there by the rail.
So just for a reference for those who may be watching, as well as those here in the room, this is the, the station district boundaries now, and what Mr. Larson is talking about is Springbrook south of I-5. You're talking about that entire area, correct?
Yes, I don't see a way you could take just part of it, uh, over to, uh, the new cross street that just got put in. Um, it, it does, it doesn't seem to make sense to divide it up. And in fact, keeping it comprehensively there adds opportunity for more commercial development, uh, along, uh, Bridgeport Way.
And
The areas were established, wasn't there certain criteria? An area had to meet in order to be included as a, as a subarea plan?
Uh, yes, and the, the council, before the actual plans were drafted, approved the boundaries of the subareas. So where we sit today with this biennial review is if the commission wishes to do so, you could provide a recommendation to council that maybe you need to reexamine the boundaries and reconsider having, um, in this case, a larger subarea, uh, to incorporate Springbrook. I will tell you that the, uh, comprehensive plan anticipated having a separate subarea plan for the Springbrook area. And I don't know if you want to get into planning best practice or not, but the idea under that is that the subareas aren't so big that they're not really a subarea anymore. And if you were to add Springbrook to this one, I, you can see how geographically that would be significantly larger than the other subareas. Um, so we would just, again, analysis, but you do have the ability to recommend it if you want.
If I, if I might offer a, a bit of a counterpoint, uh, the size of the subarea plan shouldn't matter. I don't think it's, it's, it's what goes on to, uh, to create the opportunities that are created, um, by similarly, uh, situated properties and resources. But to, to me, I don't see why size would be something to create a whole additional set of rules to go by for an, for an adjacent, very, very similar area. That would be my argument.
And I'd go back to, again, what was the criteria in establishing? I think we need to know that first before we can say, let's think, that's, that's, uh, recommended and growth.
Yep.
So if we could, if you could find that for us, please.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Then we can go from there.
Okay.
And, and this discussion carries on until next week as well?
Sure.
Oh, this
When we get the information.
This is just the beginning. You're going to be talking about this many times, many times.
Sounds good. Ms. Talbot's question?
I, yeah, just to react to that from a transportation perspective, I, I don't have an opinion about the size. Um, I'd, and I'd also want to know more about the interest in expanding the size, but, um, as you mentioned that concept, the only thing I reacted to is, is, you know, the, the state, what to me defines the station district is the station, and particularly because it is high-capacity transit, meaning that it is this, it is, um, fixed rail, uh, high-capacity sounder, sounder rail. And the, the only, um, thing about Springbrook is that the walkability between Springbrook to the station is very difficult because
Absolutely true.
You know, Bridgeport is the only overpass, and then, um, the intersection right there at the, the off-ramps and Pacific Highway and Bridgeport is just a very difficult intersection for pedestrians and walkers to get across and then over to the station. Um, and then in addition, there's also, um, Pierce Transit. The, the routes that serve, uh, the Pierce Transit routes that, that go, that serve the Springbrook area, don't, don't easily stop or transfer at the station either. People that want to, um, take the bus between the station and to the Lakewood Mall would either have to walk along, um, Pacific Highway to get the stop on Bridgeport. And it's not a very nice walk. So there's just considerations like that. You know, to help make it vibrant, there just needs to be some more considerations into the multimodal circulation of the whole thing.
Yep. Let's get that, let's get that criteria and they will continue, uh, uh, our discussions.
Absolutely.
Hope we're not getting too far off the subject.
No, no, this is fine. Um, and then the final one that I just wanted to bring up as a status report for you is this, it's basically a rewrite really of the, uh, Tillicum Neighborhood Plan, which was last adopted in two thousand and eleven. And, uh, this one has, the decision has been made to add Woodbrook to it. So, uh, as you can see here, you've got the area in pink is the current subarea, but this whole area of Woodbrook is being added to it. Quite a bit has changed since two thousand and eleven. Obviously, we've got new, two new, uh, I-5 interchanges. There's been a lot of rezoning in the Woodbrook area. Um, there's been some rezoning and some development happening along with sewer extensions in Tillicum since two thousand and eleven. So all of that is going to be reflected in the new plan. Uh, and then we are going to be, uh, working to make sure that Woodbrook is feeling like its voice is being heard as part of this process as well. Uh, both of these areas historically have felt, and they geographically are, isolated from the rest of the city. And so this is an attempt to, A, um, bring Woodbrook into the fold even more so, uh, but also help those two communities, uh, build a stronger, uh, community-level relationship. So for instance, there's the Tillicum Neighborhood Association, making sure the Woodbrook folks and the Tillicum folks are able to more easily communicate and express, uh, issues of common concern to the city. So that's been an effort as we've done this over the last year or so. Um, there were, in two thousand and twenty-two, some updates made it just as an addendum to the old plan to say, since two thousand and eleven, these are the near, meaning five years or less, ongoing five to twenty or long-term actions that were completed. There were thirty-eight out of the sixty-eight that were completed, and so there's about thirty that hadn't been started yet for various reasons. Yeah, so thirty-eight of the sixty-eight. And what we have done is incorporate those remaining thirty that might still, uh, be applicable. Some of them are obsolete because it's been so long, but we are incorporating information and strategies from the two thousand and eleven plan into the new one, as well as adding the issues related to Woodbrook. One other comment to say here is that the Tillicum Neighborhood Plan, again, this is thirteen years ago now, identified the number of housing units and jo, and workers, uh, but that will be updated based on census and other more recent data, just to make sure we're being accurate about that. And then the rest of the packet was, uh, the initial draft of these things. So please, again, if you do read them, understand that that is draft, it will change. Uh, and then, uh, what I can do the next time this comes before you is bring the information you've asked for tonight regarding why was the boundary set as it was, what were the reasons behind that, uh, and maybe also be And maybe also be able to highlight better for you what has happened since with permit activity, development, TIs and redevelopment, to give you a sense of whether it's working as intended or not. And that is it from me, Mr. Chair.
Does anyone have any additional questions for Ms. Spear? Ms. Talbot?
About, just going back to the TIF, will there, will there be other opportunities to just have that discussion more extensively?
The transportation fee? Absolutely, yes. That will be part of what will be your recommendation up to the council for the 24 big package. Yeah, no, they very much want to hear what you have to say about it.
Thank you. And then the last question I had was on Exhibit Nine in the draft, the big table of the status of all the strategies. Thank you for providing this because this is, I thought this was very extensive and helpful.
Okay.
You guys have a lot of work ahead of you. But one thing I have been interested in, especially for the CBD is, and just throughout Lakewood, is, I guess, the update of street standards and streetscaping and design standards for streetscaping. Just, in general, will, first, I was happy to see that, that the comp plan is incorporating a brand-new chapter dedicated to urban design because my sense has been for a while that the streets in Lakewood are very wide, two-lane arterials with a center turnbait and just inviting to high speeds despite the posted speed. And there are wide sidewalks, but like things like pedestrian-scale lighting, landscaped medians, the things that promote kind of a sense of place and sense of identity throughout the different neighborhoods. I would like to know, you know, I'd like to help contribute to discussion that we can have on that. And if there's any just consideration to considering updating street design standards.
Thank you for the question. I will pull my schedule out, and so I just have the right date for you, please. And I don't have, I'm sorry. It, I believe, is in either March or April. You will actually have public work staff here with you tonight during the meeting to talk about the six-year Transportation Improvement Program that they have. And you are in the role, again, of advising and providing information that would then flow up to the council. So that is an opportunity to talk to them and express exactly what you just did. And they can provide you a better sense of why the current standards are in place. Some of it is very much budget-related. And also, the sidewalk and the roundabout and other improvements they've been able to get funding for, how that may transfer into the future or not, or if things are changing. But yeah, we will have public work staff here to cover that with you.
Thank you.
May I ask another question? This is Sharon Wallace. In line with that, one of the things that would help me was I was, I was looking at some of that design stuff for, looking at like heritage trees and what types of soils we have and permeability. And I realized that there is limited evaluation for an arborist and hydrological concerns for looking at the different soil types, trying to figure out what was, would be acceptable alternatives to try to improve some of that, what she's talking about and what you've been doing. So will there be some experts in those areas that can really give us a better design so we can do a little more sophisticated planning instead of kind of what we're doing so that we can mitigate some of these things?
Are you asking specifically about tree preservation or?
Well, they all go together. I mean, if you have a good hydrology, hydrologist, they're going to be able to look at the permeability of the soils and that. They can better advise what would be possible, what would be feasible, what kind of expenses. If we know what, what we're considering heritage trees, we could start to map them out. We can start to look at better permeable surfaces or not in certain areas instead of just the same, you know, one standard meets all. There are certain areas that probably would do better with different ones. That's not an engineering area of my expertise, but, but, but that kind of thing would be a helpful discussion to have so we could do a little bit more sophisticated planning.
Two ways to answer that question for you. First of all, the city this year is starting to implement the climate change chapter that's already in the comprehensive plan. There was an implementation work plan adopted, and so we're beginning to take that and let it fly. And that will incorporate probably an advisory committee as well as work through city staff and perhaps consultants. And that will be an opportunity to talk about climate change and resiliency as required by the state, but also priorities for the city. The other thing that the city will be launching this year is its urban forestry program. That was a, an action taken over the last few years. The most recent thing that was done is the city adopted a tree canopy cover goal for 2050. And so the, the next step is to start trying to realize the goal. So looking at the current tree canopy, size, type, health kind of questions. And then from there, it's understanding what's the best way to set up a program that will be sustainable financially, resource-wise for the city, what type of partnerships there may be out there with agencies, organizations, and individuals. And again, we're going to probably have an advisory committee there as well. But there is an intent to have a certified arborist working with the city all the time. The person is on contract right now with our planning department. So when a project comes in, if there is an issue where tree, real specific analysis needs to happen, that person conducts it. But under the urban forestry program, it's anticipated they will have a much more active role and will assist with regulation update as well. So we're right on the verge of, I think, what you're asking for. You probably won't see the, the type of conversation this year that you just mentioned, but it will be coming in the next few years.
And then just one last question on that, and that is, would that incorporate a survey of, say, six-inch diameter or greater trees? So we could start, just as we are developing, not, we're not going to, you know, do every inch, but as we do it, we get those surveys with the current ability to do, you know, geolocations. So easily, anytime you do a survey, you could easily start plotting out those trees, and then you could more accurately measure your tree canopy coverage. So you would have a definitive number, and you would actually know what you have.
There is a GIS, I don't want to call it LiDAR because it wasn't LiDAR, but it was Tree Canopy from an aerial viewpoint conducted two years ago. What we're talking about doing this year is actual, more on-the-ground, true, looking at actual trees to be more accurate with it. But yes, that is an analysis to look at size, health, types, so we can understand. Because part of what's going on, not only is what's on the ground right now, but how long is it going to last? How effective is it in terms of climate change preparation? And also, as time goes by, and the effects of climate change may result in higher temperatures, what are the species that are going to last through that higher temperature future? Because maybe some of the ones that are around right now, it just simply won't, and we need to be ready to be planting the right kind of drought-resistant, heat-resistant species, that sort of thing. So that, that is all coming as part of the program.
Okay, that's what I was wanting, that's what I was asking about the arborist. Okay.
Ms. Wallace, thank you for the question. Ms. Spears, thank you for the answers. Next steps.
Next steps. We are now at the conclusion of your regularly scheduled program. So all of the information, again, in your packet tonight. We will update that and get the opportunity for the hearing to continue on your next meeting. The other thing that will happen on March 6th, excuse me, is several other items, one of which will be an annual housing report. So just kind of going over, and I know you're getting beaten over the head with housing with the 24 process, but this is one that's really more, how many permits were actually applied for, how many projects have come forward? So you can get a sense of what's the pace of development in the city. And then the meeting after that will be looking at shoreline restoration activities. You're going to have some guests come to talk to you about restoration activities over the last year. And again, we'll have the transportation, public works folks coming forward to you as well. And I think we have a council member here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Bokey, do you have anything for us this evening? Okay. Does any, does anyone have any other comments or questions this evening? No? So our next meeting is March 6th, 6:30. So would not, no other comments, questions? Thank you.